I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rios, could you please take the roll?
Yes, Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Ms. Campos is connecting right now. Mr. Dix?
Here.
Ms. Knox?
Here.
Ms. Martorano?
Here.
Mr. Mayberames?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
We have form.
Thank you.
First item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Alonso, some move.
Second? We have a motion by Alonso and a second by Knox, I believe. Is there an... Thank you, Martorano. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your vote. Ms. Campos? The vote is approved six to zero. The next item on our agenda is our district recognitions. Superintendent Roberts, are there any recognitions for today?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Yes, certainly. As always, at each board meeting, the district's executive cabinet and I attempt to bring you recognitions of the work that is happening both in and out of the classroom from teachers, staff, and students. This evening, I have two such recognitions that I'm excited to share. You know, even though we are in the middle of summer, wow, it's the middle of July almost already, things do not necessarily grind to halt here in Des Moines Public Schools. In fact, not a day goes by that our staff and students alike are not pursuing new activities and continuing their learning in one way or another. This evening, I am pleased to welcome Dr. Jessica Gorti, Director of Central Academy, to share one such example where the grind never stops. A group of Des Moines Public Schools students recently returned from China. And while there, they honed their skills in terms of their language and they worked with the, and I'm probably going to butcher this name, the Zhuhang Foreign Language School. Close? Okay, I saw a head nod. As well as, they were able to see many famous sites and really serve as ambassadors not only of Des Moines Public Schools, but the entire city of Des Moines and central Iowa. And I'll ask Dr. Jessica herself, because she has also really been recognized as an international representative for Des Moines Public Schools. She's been invited to present at the Global K-12 Education Research Association Conference this coming October in China. Doc, I know that you have some students and colleagues here with you this evening. You've kept us updated, everything from pictures to what has been happening. And I am incredibly proud of the work that you all have done. I want to ask you to come forward and introduce them and share a little bit more about your experiences.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us this few minutes to tell you a little bit about this opportunity. I don't know if you can see the PowerPoint that we have up. Is there one? Okay. So, we were invited to participate in the Inheritance of Friendships Study Tour, and there were four schools from Iowa that were invited, and Des Moines Public Schools was invited as one of those four. And we were given all expenses paid trip, except for visa. We had to pay for our own visas. But the students got to go. We get to select 10 students and two teachers and myself to go and participate in this incredible study. They rolled out the red carpet for us. They attended every comfort and security. We got to go to sites. We've got to, you know, see famous things. But we also got a chance to work one-on-one with individual students. So, this is a group of students that we brought. As you can see there, we have representatives from every Des Moines school. We chose students from Chinese 2, 3, and 4. So, the students didn't really know each other very well because they don't really have classes together until they came on this trip. So, and we have every grade level, 9 through 12. So, we had a full representation of our Des Moines students there. Some examples, seeing the sights, we went to the palace. We went to the hall, of course. We got to meet and work with Chinese students one-on-one. And I've invited these students, they're, they're like, I don't know if I want to talk to the board. I did also include in your packet a letter from one of our students who was going to be our representative and then had something that come up, so she wasn't able to do that. But you have a copy of her letter. They participated in classes with their Chinese student counterparts, and they did activities and events. They got to go in an evening and go shopping with those families. Here's Iri Freeman, who was giving a presentation about water conservation in Des Moines and in Iowa as part of the conference. We did so many activities, including planting a friendship tree. They have an entire forest that they're planting just for representatives from Iowa. And so, our students got to hang their names on these trees. That was pretty cool. They got to learn about special traditions that were going on, the Dragon Boat Festival, which is a huge holiday in China, has a special meal. And so, we were learning how to make that special treat in this photo. Huang is in it. We got to interact with the Chinese press. In fact, there was a press packet that followed us everywhere we went. We made the news like eight or nine times, national news, in China. And they interviewed, as they got to interview our students, they noticed that our students were pretty good with their Chinese, actually. And they actually were practicing it and using it. And so, as the tour rolled on, there were more and more heavily biased towards Central Academy students featured in those articles. And so, I think everybody here was interviewed at one point or another. We had some really great staff that went with us. Mr. Hao is our Chinese teacher in Des Moines Schools, for the high schools, and he's a wonderful, wonderful teacher. And Ms. Reyes, who is our counselor assistant, also went with us because she is bilingual. And we went to the Shijiazhong Foreign Language School, and they had students there who are learning all kinds of languages, including Spanish and German and French and all kinds of languages. So, it's an opportunity for them to have some experiences with a native Spanish speaker. And they formed some lifelong friendships. This is towards the end of the tour, our boys are getting to know each other, and they're just like buddies the whole time. So, any of this stand out to you guys you want to talk about? Evelyn, Huang, two principals, come up and say a little something.
I guess when I was in China, it was, there's so much to say about it. It was such a fun trip. Everyone was so welcoming. And it was really interesting because every single site we went to, we, they always told us about the traditional meanings and like the significance of every place we went to. And I thought it was really interesting to learn about that. And I really hope someday I can go back and learn more about just the culture and the language.
For me, this trip was a great opportunity for using the language that I learned here at Central Academy in real life. Also, I got to learn like the difference between the US education and the China education, which what a good opportunity to learn. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We are so incredibly proud of you all and look forward to the continued partnership with Zhujiang Foreign Language School and our Chinese counterparts. The second recognition this evening is one that we were likely to hear more and more about, but I had to sort of acknowledge or shout it out because a representative body is present here from Roosevelt High School under the incredible tutelage of Steve Shapar. Steve Shapar is not only the principal of Roosevelt High School, but served as a lead and a point of contact for a recently held National Speech and Debate Tournament, held right here in Des Moines Public Schools, very hosted, a little over 7,000 students from all over the world. Got a chance to meet with some of our foreign delegations. But it is clear that Steve and the Roosevelt team and every other Des Moines Public Schools teacher and staff who was a part of this have done such an outstanding job, that not only is Des Moines Public Schools slated to host the National Speech and Debate Tournament next year, but just hot off the press, we haven't yet confirmed, found out from Steve, that they have requested for us to host for the next three years. Congratulations and thank you for continuing to be an amazing ambassador. Madam Chair, that concludes this evening's recognitions.
Thank you. We're very excited and proud. We really appreciate all of the hard work. So, now we turn our work to board reports. And the next item on our agenda is our monitoring report, Goal 3. Before I turn it over to Ms. Alonso to facilitate the board discussion of the monitoring report, Dr. Roberts, I believe there are representatives that you would like to bring up as part of the monitoring report?
Yes, absolutely. As recently, we've embarked upon this tradition, now is a tradition whereby, in addition to sharing publicly and with a spirit of transparency, our goal monitoring reports and how we're progressing or not progressing with our three board goals and five guardrails, we thought that it is prudent for us to make sure that we're sharing a little bit of the lived experiences of individuals who are really close to the work. So, this evening, we will have representatives of some school teams presenting for about five minutes about their experiences with the work as it relates to the goal. So, the team for Goal 3 can come forward and present.
Madam Chair? Hi. Superintendent Dr. Roberts, board, thank you for having us here. I wish I could have 50 other staff members here and 700 students with me because the staff is one who is doing the real work and working with kids and the learning that they're bringing to learning for kids. So, I do wish they can be here. But who I do have is our success worker, Jennifer Murphy. You'll hear from her soon. Our AP, Jeff Richard. I don't know, when Dr. Johnson came to me and said, "We met a target," you know, I was so excited because I know how hard our students and our staff work. So, she asked when I would I come and just talk about what we've done, what has changed? And there's a lot. Lot has changed since, you know, you know, I started this work, since it's changed and the work has evolved, you know? First, working with staff, it's just mindset, you know? Mindset of our, of our staff has changed, you know, what our kids can do or compared to what we thought before that they can't do. But now, our staff truly believe that our kids can learn, and they can learn on high levels. And that comes with the work that these instrumental, the work that we're doing here and just believing in our students. You know, implementing gleam has been very effective for us. And I think that's been a change with that mindset, you know? Giving students grade level work, setting goals, celebrating success when students meet those goals. And not just proficiency, but actually growth, you know? I tell my staff all the time that before we can get to proficiency, we must have growth. And our kids are demonstrating that they have growth. I just want to talk about, well, have my team talk about, do two parts of this because I know there's only five minutes. One is the work in PLCs, which is very instrumental in students' learning. Another part is attendance, because we know that if kids aren't in school, nothing that we're talking about is going to work anyway. So, just for, just a minute, I'm going to put Jeff up here for you to talk about the work that we're doing in PLCs. And then Jennifer Murphy will talk about her work in making sure that kids are getting the stool.
Hello, thanks for having me. Specifically, when it comes to PLCs and our, and our focus there, I think for us, Kit mentioned, the, the shift in mindset, going from a kind of a deficit mindset of our, what our, what our kids can't do, and this is hard for students, and shifting that to more of a mindset of, you know, what can our students do? And, and I use these words all the time when I'm in PLCs, is that our kids can do hard things. They can do hard things, and we want them to do hard things. And it's our job to help them do hard things. So, specifically from a PLC focus, three very structural things that we put in place and things that we remember every time we get together and are a part of every math PLC, use of teacher-facing instructional materials. Anytime we're digging into, into that work, we're using the teacher-facing instructional materials. The second thing that we're looking for and trying to identify in every single lesson that we, we dig into are opportunities for students to engage in productive struggle. We dig deep into those lessons, into those instructional materials to identify those places where students are going to engage in productive struggle. Where are they going to have challenges? And how are we going to support them through those challenges? The third thing that I would, that I would add would be the increased use of collaborative learning structures. Our kids are social beings, and, and they work and they learn together. And so, not only looking for those opportunities for productive struggle, which exist within those collaborative learning structures, where if, if they're not there within the lesson, we're, we're building them in. So, those are things that were put in place as far as PLCs go to kind of help us gain some traction, build some momentum. And those are the things that we're going to look to keep using next year when we dig in. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you for having me. So, I'm Jennifer Murphy, the Success Case Manager at Meredith Middle School, and I've been in the district about 25 years doing this work. I am lucky enough to be part of our attendance team, and it is so fun for me. You know, if a kid isn't there, there's a reason. And we, what we do at Meredith is we have a lot of Tier 1 celebrations, a lot of events where they can get to know the staff, getting them involved in activities so that they want to come to school. And then, on a Tier 2 level, we have a great team made up of all of our support team that dig into why kids aren't at school, and that's all kids. And sometimes going out there and doing home visits and talking with kids and building those relationships when they do come to school. I work with teachers a lot about how to handle it if a kid hasn't been there for a while, how to get them back engaged, because the kids, they, they, there's a reason they're not there, and we've got to figure out what that barrier is, take care of it, and get them in school. And on the Tier 3 level, it's me knocking on doors, trying to find these kids and making sure they are at school learning so we can make these goals that we have set. So, thanks for having me.
Just saying, but thanks for having us. Definitely committed to the work, and this is just beginning. And we'll continue serving kids and giving them the best experience they can have at Meredith. Thank you.
Thank you, Team Meredith. We appreciate you all.
Just have one question. Great work. Can you hear me okay? Just quickly, you know, talking about mindset, and I think that we've been talking about mindset for a while. So, students change their mindset based on how we change our mindset of ourselves first, and then the people around us. What do you believe you have done differently that should be replicated in terms of how we perceive students around the district?
Start by saying, giving the opportunities. I mean, I, I think previously, it comes from a good place, but we tend to lower things. And the mindset ain't bad. It is bad, but I'm saying, in a adult's mind, they're thinking, "I'm helping a student. This works too hard, or you can't do this, so I'm going to lower this." So, just giving them the opportunities to do, I would say, grade level work with relationships is going to change a student's mindset and believing in them. That changes the mindset of a student. Can I do this or cannot do? If I believe in that student, I'm not going to give up on you, as Jeff said. That changes a student's mindset that my teacher believes in me so I can do the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. So, we really appreciate sort of that sharing and additional context around Goal 3A, which is specific to grade 6 through 8. Now, we certainly would like to benefit from the, the high school perspective, which is Goal 3 in general.
It's a team effort. So, we've got staff and students here tonight to talk about the work that we're doing at Roosevelt. As you all know, we're committed to excellence through unity, equity, and integrity, and that includes instructional excellence, which motivates and inspires us to have outstanding student outcomes and tremendous growth. It is anchored in, the last three years, our admin team has been expected to conduct a minimum of six walkthroughs a week with coaching conversations and, if not coaching conversations, a minimum of written feedback, which totals to at least 2,000 walkthroughs in the last three years that I've been principal at Roosevelt High School. So, that's not a new thing that we're doing, but it's something we're committed to because it helps us anchor both quantitative data and qualitative data to have really robust conversations. And, you know, we would not be here first and foremost if it were not for our students. They are remarkable, and they have risen to the increased expectations, and they are willing to learn. But then, secondly, the most, the other most important group is our teachers and our support staff. They have really dug into the work, and you're going to hear a little bit about that from some of our staff, but they've bought into the power of positive relationships, two-way communication, and really thinking about adult actions and why our actions need to change in order for student outcomes to change. It's not the students that need to change. We need to change. And so, that's been really powerful. So, I'm just super excited about the work that is ahead and excited for our team to share a little bit more with you. So, I'll turn it over to Lisa, one of our assistant principals.
I'm Lisa Hesse, I'm one of the associate principals. This past year, Roosevelt prioritized student agency within instruction and learning, which has had a significant impact on the conditions and experiences of our students. Our PLC is intentionally planned for student agency within their instruction, and this includes seeking out feedback often from students, analyzing their feedback, and then responding to it through instructional moves and strategies, including that gleam work with engaging in scaffolds for those students. Additionally, which I'm really excited about, our Student Leadership Collective, which is a group of students committed to transforming student experiences based on their voice, actually led professional development for our staff this year multiple times. It highlighted the importance of student voice within classrooms, but also equipped our teachers with tools that were relevant and strategies that meant something to our students so that they could hear that and build that relationship with our teachers. This intentional commitment to students as stakeholders is part of our larger work. Our PLCs and our admin team routinely deep dive into grade distribution data, which allows our teachers to be equipped with an informed knowledge of our students and what actions actually impact them in the classroom. And by pairing this intentional focus with data-informed instruction and a belief that students are our priority stakeholder and a valuable collaborative member of the educational experience, we have begun transforming our spaces and empowered our students to know not only their learning, but their identities within the classroom. This empowered our staff, who were able to develop these instructional moves, scaffolded accurately to individual students as well as groups of students. And we are just really incredibly excited for the momentum that this builds and the mind shift that it has for our staff. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bev, who has a little more to share.
Hello, I'm Beverly Eck, Associate Principal at Roosevelt. I'm here to talk about the high-quality math curriculum team that we've developed. The HQC is made up of PLC leads from Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry with administrators. The team meets regularly to discuss observational data around the implementation of IM, which is Illustrated Math, or Luster of Math, sorry. The indicators of focus were decided on collectively by the team and aligned with building and district goals. The indicators that were chosen are building a sense of belonging, making thinking visible in classrooms, and providing access to meaningful learning experiences for all students. The cadence of the HQC is we study qualitative and quantitative data, and then we walk through, thinking about what the teachers and their reactions and their celebrations and what they want to do next. One specific example of something that we put in place is that the team decided that we needed to make sure that we had an observation tool that we could use, but we also had individuals we wanted to watch teach. So, we had Isaac Rodenberg, who is our Secondary Curriculum Coordinator for Math, come in and provide professional learning. He did a lesson that the teachers were able to watch, and he did a lesson that the teachers were able to take part in. This experience was a catalyst for strong conversations in PLCs, and instructional shifts were made. And you were very, they were very apparent when we went to walkthroughs, and they were very apparent when we saw that the students' outcomes were starting to increase. So, next is going to be Melissa Floyd.
Hi, I'm Missy Floyd. I'm here to talk a little bit about what we did with our ISAS, which is directly related to the goal. As quarter three was approaching, we presented the school leadership team with the district and Roosevelt's goals around proficiency in, of our black males in ISAS tests. We knew that we could get all of our students to take the test because we had achieved that the previous year, but we also wanted to focus as a school on our growth of all of our students as well. So, our SLT and our admin team created action steps to see both proficiency and growth. Our first step was to intentionally place students in rooms with teachers that they knew. In the past, that doesn't always happen because we have to give them a space to take a test, and it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't have any rhyme or reason. So, they share, we were very intentional about that. We asked our 10th-grade black males who they wanted and felt most comfortable with in their classrooms and placed them there. We asked our BFL, some students that she had good relationships with, and although she can't test, we put her with a teacher so she was in the room with students that tested. We put students in rooms with coaches that they had in sports or in clubs or in the, in the arts departments or if they, or with classes. We then asked each student to look at their ISAS scores from the previous year and create a goal for themselves to improve. We had small incentives for students who improved and had the best attendance. We determined vocabulary from the practice test that we wanted to ensure students knew and created learning in their classes around these words in the weeks leading up to the testing. We wanted our students to know that we believed in them and that while these tests aren't everything, that they are important. So, we asked our community to help us in ensuring that every student had a card of encouragement to, at the start of testing. Our community, former teachers, and our current staff showed us tons of love. Along with personal cards to read, each student also received a lovingly-made Warm Fuzzy that were surprisingly a big hit and some gum and mints just to get them throughout, throughout the testing. Our students are amazing, and we saw growth in 67% in proficiency and 35% of our 9th-grade black males this school year, as well as in all areas of our school. I'm proud to say that our focus on both academics and social-emotional needs of our students will continue to be at the forefront of our action planning in our constant pursuit of excellence. Next, you'll hear from Nicole Benson, one of our associate principals.
Hi, hello, everyone. So, they talked a little bit about like systems view, right? Like things that we're doing at a system. I want to talk to you a little bit about like getting into the work and rolling up our sleeves with our teachers and our students. So, Cycle 2 instruction is where we talk about in our PLCs, how does the data look? You delivered a lesson, how does it look? And we need to respond if students need more challenge or if students need more time, right? I support Algebra 1. I know our, my fellow associate principals, they support the other math. What we were noticing is that teachers felt this like justice, this pull between following the pacing guide and responding to kids. They were like, if I keep going, like I'm supposed to cover all of these really important standards and skills, which are really important to us, I'm not able to respond in a timely manner to students without being behind on the pacing guide. And so, we had some really serious conversations about what that meant. Our teachers are incredible. They want to do it all, and they were being, they felt extremely overwhelmed with the fact that they needed to be at a test at a certain time, but kids weren't getting it. And so, what we noticed is they were handing kids tests, and they knew that the student either needed way more challenge and would just blow through that test, or the student was going to be successful possibly. So, our work in Cycle 2 was really where we hit the ground running. We really focused conversations on, how do we trim the fat? What are we prioritizing this week? Yes, everything's important. Of, of course, everything's important, but if you had, knowing the standard and knowing the skill that we're supposed to assess, what within this week is critical within your lesson in IM? And teachers, they'll be able to share with you. They were able to acknowledge that, identify that, and then that allowed them more time to slow down and look at data from students, whether it was formative, summative, and say, "Here are my kids who need a challenge. They rocked it. They got it right away." So, what can we do, right? And these conversations happen in PLC. What can we do for these kids who need that challenge? And then, oh my goodness, over half of our students didn't get it. So, something went awry. What are we going to do? And they would talk together about, is there another lesson we can pull from? What does IM have that we can do with that? So, Cycle 2 was really critical for us. I think that teachers felt pressure that they couldn't respond to data, and we were noticing that. And we, as administrative support, wanted them to know that you absolutely have our support in responding to students, even if that means getting a little off your pacing guide, and brought in Isaac Rodenberg to, to support us with that as well. You're lucky enough, we're so excited, you get to hear from some teachers. Dion is going to talk real quick. She was in my PLC. She's our Algebra 1 Special Education Teacher, and she's amazing. So, she's going to talk to you a little bit about that work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dion Ferguson and I'm, thank you, special education teacher at Roosevelt High School. And I just wanted to talk about our co-teaching relationship that we have at Roosevelt. During our PLC meeting time, all teachers are shared, are share responsibility in planning the lessons and delivering the instruction and the scaffold. So even though I'm the special ed teacher, we all collaborated together to work things out and we, sometimes we had professional development and that professional development also included all of the teachers, the special ed teachers, the gen ed teachers, everybody was accountable for learning. Through co-teaching pairs, this year we worked together to plan, provide instruction and access our, assess our students better. Our leadership team provided real-time data so the teachers could change their instructional practices as we were going through the year. As co-teachers, we worked tirelessly to communicate with students and parents and other community organizations such as Math Motivators to work towards improved academic outcomes. Using the data that we were provided, we were able to effectively identify and address student learning gaps. We provided more opportunities that led to better performance and the understanding of the material for all students. Sorry about the ums.
Hey, don't go.
The co-teachers also worked closely with our special ed consultant and utilized the specially-designed instruction, SDI guides that are available to allow for teaching, the SDI allows for adjustments in teaching methods and materials to help to create a more inclusive and effective learning environment for all students. And in conclusion, the co-teaching model we exercised this year was a powerful educational strategy that enriched the learning experience for all students. We leveraged data to closely monitor the progress of student groups. We used this data to change our instructional practices. Within our Algebra I PLC, we fostered a culture of continuous improvement and focused on collaboration, so working together all the time. Lastly, the leadership at Roosevelt expects teachers to continuously learn and grow in their professional practices. And I feel like that made a big difference.
Thank you.
That's it. Going to introduce Jace Arons.
Hi, I'm Jace Arons. I teach Algebra I at Roosevelt. This year at Roosevelt, we had a brand-new Algebra I team. One of the main things we did right away was to make sure everyone understood the content and what was expected. One of the ways we did that was to consistently go through each unit's standards, tests, quizzes, and curriculum guides to make sure we are all on the same page, as well as to learn as much as possible about the topic before we started. We consistently had discussions about what each learning target meant and then used the curriculum-guiding success criteria to try to align what skills we could target in the classroom to build students up towards success on the learning targets. We often brought in our curriculum coordinator, that you've heard his name a couple times, Isaac Rodenberg, when we were confused or had questions on what was expected or wondered about the reasoning behind any of the targets. This led to productive argument around each success criteria, which improved our understanding and made sure everyone was typically on the same page. Doing this allowed each teacher to have the freedom to be creative in their teaching styles, but still make sure we are all teaching the same content at the same level. It also allowed us to discuss throughout the unit, the successes and missed opportunities we were seeing from students under the same context and tried different things to attempt to help improve student learning. Some of these attempts were successful and some of these attempts were not, but our hope is that our continued collaboration will allow us to improve each year into the future. And now, students are going to talk, so Chiron.
Hello, Chiron, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me today. First, I want to like, first what sparked my interest in math and perfect the scores was my brother, because he taught me a lot. My mom made him teach me math or whatever he was doing, his homework, because he didn't know, like, what should I say? That's the only way he could get it done. So, he taught me a lot of math, that's what sparked my interest in math. I want to also thank my mom because she has high expectations of me. She, she just calls up to the school whenever I need it, email the principal, text the principal, you know, whenever I needed it. And I want to thank my geometry teacher, Ms. Williams Christian, she made it easy for me to ask more questions and made it easy for me to get to know what the problem was and how to solve the geometry problems. I also want to thank my principal, he let me do my work in his classrooms to perfect my scores, so I want to thank him. And to conclude, I want to thank all my teachers for making it easier. And introduction of Jeffrey Wilson.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Wilson. Last year at Roosevelt High School, I made it my mission to do really good in math class. And growing up, I was always good at math because my older sister and my mom have always been good at math. And when I got to Roosevelt, because I've gone to Central Academy, 7th and 8th grade, I was already really good at math. So when I got there, Algebra I was very easy for me. So I came to Ms. Hesse and Ms. Murphy and I asked if I, if it was possible for me to test out of Algebra I. And they said it was going to be hard, but they made it happen and I'm thankful for that. And after I tested out Algebra I, it was hard to get used to because I was with a group of kids who were older than me that I didn't really know, but they helped me through it by helping understand the material that I missed in the first semester of geometry. But I ended up doing really good in geometry. I ended up passing with an A at the end of the semester, which is really good. And, but Ms. Ferguson, she was my best friend in Algebra I. Me and her would be in the back of the classroom talking because Algebra I was easy. But Ms. Ferguson was helping me on harder stuff because Algebra I was very easy. But me and Ms. Ferguson are still best friends. But testing out was hard because they said it was never done before and that it was going to be really hard and that they made me take a couple extra tests more than ISAS. I had to take, I don't even know what the test was called, but it was like, test, it was like test my placement. And they said that I shouldn't have even been in Algebra I to start with because I already knew most geometry and that they couldn't take me out of geometry either because jumping like two grades is really hard. So next year I'm taking Algebra II in pre-calc compacted in the one course, which is going to be a challenge, but it should be easy. It's going to be easy, thank you.
So in summary, we've raised the floor, but we have not gotten to the ceiling and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge former math teachers at Roosevelt who are now admin leading this work in the district, OC Lowry at Lincoln and Robert Endazzo at Hoover, and then former admin who have become principals, Frank Lee, Quinn Kelly, and Praveen Banacotti. They've been all a part of this journey as well, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Team Roosevelt.
Thank you. Questions? Principal, Chair, can we, can we ask you something?
Of course.
I'm speaking on behalf of our group, okay? So it's, we would like to ask you, actually they put me in charge, so I'm going to ask you. So I hear relationships and you said at the beginning, as you began your presentation, they bought into positive relationships and that's what it's all about. So what is it that you identify as the biggest shift that you have made, that you can testify is the biggest reason that you have the results that you have today?
So two things. One, we put an emphasis very regularly on sending positive communication home to families. So handwritten notes, snap messages, texts, emails, and teachers will be told, you have until this date to get this many positive contacts done. Let your admin know who you've contacted and make sure that's documented in our contact log, so then there's some accountability to that. And then I model that, so I email our school leadership team, here are the people that I've contacted home, so that they know we're not asking them to do something that we're not doing, that we're not willing to do ourselves. And then the second thing is Ms. Hesse talked about empowering our students to be the experts and to really work with our staff on what it means to have positive relationships. And so we're really proud that from spring to spring, we had a six-point gain on panorama and student-teacher relationships and sense of belonging. Again, we're not done, it raised the floor, but there's still a lot of work to do. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, great job. I guess I, I get to continue speaking. Great. All right, well, we're going to jump into our monitoring of our Goal 3 and interim Goal 3A and interim Goal 3B. Our Goal 3, the percent of black male 11th grade students proficient on the ISAS mathematics assessment, will increase from 17.7% in June 2022 to 45% in June 2026. Our interim Goal 3A, the percent of grade 6 through 8 black male students meeting benchmark on the FastBridge Math Screener, will increase from 15.7% in June 2023 to 45% in June 2026. Interim Goal 3B, the percent of black male students enrolled in Algebra I as 9th graders earning a B or higher will increase from 22.2% in June 2023 to 50% in June 2026. This report is not on track. We're going to go ahead and jump into our monitoring. We want to make sure that of course, we, oh gracias, thank you. We have to make sure that we have the four components. We have to show that it's, that we have what's being monitored aboard, that we have three previous reports appearing, reporting periods. We also have to make sure that we have that evaluation utilized by superintendent and then the documentation that the evidence was utilized, along with the next steps. We will go ahead and begin with our who, what, why questions and who would like to go first? So our current reality, who has the first question?
Dr. Roberts, as I look at the data for interim Goals 3A and 3B, neither one are meeting our target. And I am curious, what do you attribute us not meeting the target on this particular, on both 3A and 3B?
Yes, so thank you very much for the question. Certainly when we look at what you reference in Board Member Marana is the line graph which shows the measure between the actual, the target versus the actual. And the line graph certainly gives the indication that while we're not meeting proficiency, we certainly want to make sure that we are attributing the fact that we're not meeting proficiency to the need or necessity for change in adult behavior. And that adult behavior starts all the way at the top and that is with me, my executive cabinet members who are responsible for teaching and learning, and it certainly trickles down to what is happening in the classroom with teachers. And so, to sum up, we are not necessarily meeting proficiency because we still have areas in which we have to improve around delivering on strong pedagogical practices that truly meets the needs of students in math.
My follow-up then, Dr. Roberts, would be what are you currently doing to change that adult behavior with your teaching and learning department?
Yeah, so I'm actually excited about the shift we've made where we have the practitioners, the implementers who are sharing additional context before we get into the monitoring, because what we heard earlier, our practices that are truly, truly shifting what the experiences of students are, right? And that includes the work that is happening from our principals. Our principals who are embodying and truly exemplifying what it means to be an instructionally-focused leader are committed to making sure that they're creating the kind of professional learning communities within their school and school buildings that focus on continuous improvement, not only for teacher practice, but for students. And so while we're not meeting proficiency based on this line graph, there are reasons for us to celebrate some of what is happening in terms of progress with regards to the growth.
Dr. Roberts, on page two, under what's going well, to what do you attribute the increase of 3.07% for black males with IEPs in 6th through 8th grade?
Yeah, so I, I think I'm not going to be able to share with you an exhaustive list of what we can attribute this increase to, but I heard some of it mentioned tonight by teachers, right? There are three things that I want to highlight. One, when we think about students who are a part of our special education population, that is students who have IEPs per Public Law 94142, having a robust co-teaching model is always a game changer, right? We've seen a lot of research and there's six proven research co-teaching models. And what we have seen throughout many of our classes as we visit our schools is that we are seeing these models on display. And what it allows us, allows our teachers to do is truly to be able to meet the needs of individual students, not only based on their IEP goals, but actually to meet the needs of students based on their learning modalities. The second is, of course, we have adopted a culturally responsive framework in the form of Glean. And while we are focused primarily on the first two and to some extent the third, letter in the acronym with grade-level instruction, the E is one that I believe has really given us some return in that investment, some early returns, because teachers are truly engaging students in terms of the pedagogical practices. And the third is just our commitment to make sure that we will not only recognize and value that we have some of the most amazing teachers anywhere in this country, but we have to also remain committed as a leadership team, principal all the way up, to create an opportunity for them to be able to plan, create an opportunity for them to be able to have more capacity building around professional development, and really allowing them to have agency to deliver on their content. And those are just some of the areas that I think we can use to attribute to the successes we've seen.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, I have a question. One of the most important things I heard from the participants was from Lisa at Roosevelt, who mentioned seeking student feedback was critical and then actually implementing it. So I'm curious, what student feedback is being implemented to address some of these goals and this not being on track?
And so, while I'm not going to be able to speak to the sort of the granular level of the student-teacher conversations, it is clear to me, based on the almost six percentage point increase around a sense of belonging, that for example Roosevelt High School, I know Lincoln High School and some others have seen around sense of belonging, it really speaks to this idea that students are now believing that they have more agency around their learning, right? So we are no longer seeing a lot of direct teaching. Probably I would venture to say, at the risk of being in a safe space, about 90% of our schools, all of our schools have what is considered a problem of practice. And that is an area of instructional academics that they're going to focus on for a specific period of time. I would say about 90% of our schools have adopted as a problem of practice, a pedagogical strategy that we often refer to as allowing students carry the cognitive load, right? That's where you're seeing equity of voice. I'm getting real pedagogically technical right now. What that means is, in an average 65-minute class period, you should not have the old paradigm of teaching where the teacher voice is heard more than 60 or 70% of the time. Instead, the teacher serves more as a facilitator. And even when the instructional content is rigorous, they're allowing students to grapple with content before they intervene. I also want to add, again, staying in this technical realm of education speak, there is a model that is utilized in most classrooms around the country, certainly here in the Bonn Public Schools, that is called the Gradually Released Model. And that's where each lesson, a teacher divides into three different components. It's the I do, that is what is the teacher going to do when they're introduced to new content. The we do, this is where when teachers and students work together on that new content and then the you do, which is the independent practice. That comes much later on in the lesson. What we have been hearing, the feedback that I've gotten is, as a result of Innovative Minds, we are flipping that content to really allow for students to carry the cognitive load. And so the independent practice, the you do, often is And so the independent practice, the you do, often is given at the beginning of a lesson. And so students have to really try to demonstrate how they've accessed knowledge, how they've grappled with the content before the teacher intervenes and provides them with guidance and support. So we're giving students more opportunities to demonstrate their learning, to grapple with. One of the middle school associate principals said, believing that they can do hard or difficult things, and that's where the mindset shift comes in.
Under what's not going well, there are several bullet points that identify our black males are declining over and over again in various different grade levels. What, what barriers exist that are causing such drastic declines for our black males in particular? On page three?
Yeah. Thank you for that. Allow me to preface my, my response by referencing a report that was written by the premier and probably most credible African-American educator organization in the country. It's called NAPSI, the National Alliance of Black School Educators. In nineteen eighty-three through eighty-five, NAPSI produced a report titled Saving the African-American Child. This year, NAPSI is, I believe, celebrating its fifty-second or fifty-third year, and we're there having their conference in Atlanta, and they've decided to revisit this report that was really game-changing and revolutionary. And what they highlighted in the report is that when you think about the cultural experiences of the African-American child or African-American family, we should not necessarily just base their ability, their skills, and their trajectory for success on standardized test scores. And so, when I think about what we're seeing here in terms of the decline in scores for our black males, it is clear to me and to many in the district that we have to continue to revamp, refine, and become much more sophisticated in how we're delivering on instruction to truly meet the needs of those students who are in front of us. I also want to highlight, while we are focused tonight on the experiences, achievements, or decline in proficiency of black males, the data that we're looking at here is also very closely correlated to our all-student group. So we've also seen a decline in math proficiency for students across the board, which tells me that it's not a singular subgroup that is being marginalized or misaligned. And I'm not saying this to minimize, for any reason, the educational or academic experiences of black males. But I wanted to be very, very clear that this is unacceptable for us. We are continuing to grapple with this, but also to make sure that everyone who is tuned into the board meeting understands that this is a district-wide and a systemic issue that we are committed to addressing with the adoption of a culturally responsive curriculum by partnering with some credible community partners who will, who are intended to bring some match support around interventions to us, and by making sure that we are continuously building capacity in our teachers so that we can truly give them and give students agency around their own learning. The bullet points here that you referenced, Board Member Mariano, is certainly one that causes us to continue to lose sleep. But I'm hoping that at some point, we can also highlight and over-index on areas where we're seeing what is going well.
Dr. Roberts, we continually hear about the GLEAM framework, and it was really nice to hear about some positive use of GLEAM and reaction to it from our guests tonight. Can you give us a picture of, in your walkthroughs especially, a picture of the teacher who is picking up the GLEAM framework and really using it effectively versus the ones who are still clearly having a challenge? Because on page three, we still see a variance in GLEAM walkthrough indicators by classroom. So what does that picture look like of the, the teacher who is using this really well versus the teacher who is still struggling to use it?
Yeah, thank you. Excellent question. I'm excited to share a reaction to that question for a couple of different reasons, right? One, oftentimes when we have a new initiative that requires people to have their thinking challenged, their thinking push or their mental models challenged, excuse me, particularly in the pre-K-12 setting, we tend to see a lot of resistors. In the Mont public schools, we are not seeing that. We are not having that experience. The variance that you see is just based on a couple of things. We are in the infancy of the adoption of the GLEAM framework. And so while we were able to get to a number of schools, and the number doesn't come to mind right now, around conducting those GLEAM walks, we are seeing a really strong and healthy appetite amongst teachers and leaders across the district to adopt the GLEAM framework. One bit of evidence that supports that is, and I've shared this already with the board and community, about three weeks ago, we had one hundred and fifty teachers and leaders who went to Denver, Colorado, where they spent an entire week so that they can hone their skills around highly effective GLEAM adoption. I believe that in the next school year, we're going to see a situation where we are scaling the adoption of GLEAM across all of our schools. There is so much enthusiasm around adopting this framework and having it be married to our IM and EL curriculum. So while the data shows that variance is something that is top of mind for us, and we certainly want to keep our finger in the pulse of that.
If not, we will move on to our how questions.
Dr. Roberts, in a previous response to my question, you had mentioned the correlation between all students' achievement and all students are showing a decline, not just our black males. You said it's district-wide, it's systemic. But yet, when I look at page three, under next steps, and what are we going to do, the top two things are interventions. And I've, I've asked this question in the past, and forgive me, I know that the way that I ask it tends to come off a little bit harsh, but we cannot intervene our way out of a tier-one problem. So can you help me understand how a district-wide systemic concern is being addressed with intervention versus a tier-one response?
Thank you. Excellent question and observation. If I may, let me just offer that the observation which suggests that we are trying to intervene our way out of the deficits that should be supported by tier-one instructions is not necessarily accurate. We want to make sure that every single day, we have a healthy marriage between tier-one instruction and a solid intervention program. In this case, our multi-tier support systems. And so, our tier-one, our intervention program is certainly not going to ever supplant our desire and commitment to make sure that we are seeing solid pedagogical strategies being delivered. It's one of the reasons why our principals and associate principals are spending an inordinate amount of time in classrooms observing teachers and providing a targeted, differentiated feedback. And they're not doing so with our intervention programs. They're doing so with the tier-one instruction. So I really appreciate Board Member Mariano that push, but I want to make sure that we are providing clarity that we are not attempting at all to intervene our way out of this issue. But we are going to continue to maintain this commitment to offering opportunities to have either pushing or pull-out intervention programs. And then ultimately, we are looking at the possibility of partnering with some really credible community organizations to have after-school programming as well. But we will not ever shy away from getting better at our tier-one instructions. So I thank you for that.
I have just sort of a follow-up question, and I think you might have answered part of it already, Dr. Roberts. Page three, bullet two, how will these significant and unfinished learning needs be identified in a way that it clearly helps staff deliver the support necessary to students?
Yeah, thank you. So one of the moves that we've made is to hire highly qualified and trained educators to serve as interventionists. And so unfinished learning is certainly a learning where students were not able to demonstrate mastery of a specific standard or a certain content. And so in order to make sure, to make sure that we address the unfinished learning by moving students steadily towards mastery, we have decided to, I think, hire math interventionists at every single one of our high schools. And we are also exploring that opportunity. While we're having some scheduling challenges, we don't have a resource challenge around financial resources, thanks to Title I funding. We are also exploring the possibility of hiring math interventionists at all of our middle schools as well. But unfinished learning is something that we are certainly grappling with. Wanted to make sure students demonstrate mastery. You know, let me go a little deeper again in terms of a technical offering, just for the enlightenment of the board and community. Many of our students, many of our teachers, I should say, and school leaders, and even those of us at the district office, when we have a highly scripted but really solid curriculum such as IM, we find ourselves trying to provide teachers with support as they grapple with this interesting dichotomy between pacing versus mastery. And so teachers have to manage pacing because they're expected to cover X number of materials or standards within a certain period of time. But when you're addressing academic deficits in students, pacing is not going to help them. Unfinished learning is less about pacing and it's more about mastery. And so in order for us to address unfinished learning, we're going to have to find ways to make sure that we message to teachers that it's okay to focus on mastery and find a healthy balance between covering the pacing guide. I'm probably going to hear some divergent perspectives from my team later on, but that's how we work. We're going to grapple with this, but my personal philosophy is unfinished learning is only going to be addressed when we focus on getting students towards mastery.
Thank you.
Dr. Roberts, we are in the throes of reimagining education. We set a new goal, and that was specifically around connection to career pathways or enroll, enlist-equipped framework. And it seems, and I'm asking for some education, how does this connect to relevance? And so I understand the GLEAM framework, but I'm also understanding, how does this, often what you hear from community members and students is, this isn't relevant to me? And I'm trying to understand how GLEAM, how all of this fits to helping somebody think through math through the lens of, I don't know, say, construction or electrical wiring? Like, just help me understand how this aligns, if at all, this rigor to the relevance of what we're hearing from our community who are saying they can't, students are struggling to find the connection to math in their future pathway?
It's an age-old problem, you know? Even as a student in high school, I often wanted to challenge and question my teachers about, you know, when and how am I going to use this? And doing my experience, which was not so long ago, probably ten years ago in high school, I'm kidding. We had, our student experience is one where the teacher talked to us. The teacher told us that this is what we needed to do because they were the teachers standing in front of the classroom. What GLEAM offers is for us to make sure that we are creating and cultivating the soil for students to have more agency. And so GLEAM, when we think about the last three letters in the acronym, right, EA and M, engagement, affirmative, and meaningful, we are truly attempting to value the student experience. And by valuing the student experience, we are not only thinking about how are they, how well are they going to do on ISAS or a standardized assessment, but are we truly preparing them in, aligned with our goal three, for post-secondary success? And so we will continue to have student voice as a part of our curriculum refinement and implementation. In terms of actual solid data that shows sort of the early wins that we're getting, I want to highlight for the board and community, if I may, that what we have seen is a positive correlation between the GLEAM walkthrough data and black males who are earning an A or a B in Algebra One. A second data point that I wish to highlight for the benefit of the board and the community is that black males who took Algebra Two were more likely to score proficient than those who did not. And so again, we want to continue to dispel this pernicious myth that historically marginalized students, especially black males, are not capable of. And I'm committed, along with the members of the leadership team and school leaders and teachers, we are committed to doing so. Finally, Madam Chair, you referenced our reimagining education work. This is probably the most ambitious undertaking that the Mont public schools has engaged in in the last probably fifty years. And while I'm not at liberty yet to share at length and in detail what that entails, what I'll reference is simply this. The reimagining education work, which is led by a dynamic group of our associate superintendent and authors, is truly intended to make sure that we explore educational practices that no one has thought about, but practices that are grounded in solid predictive analysis and what we believe will not only challenge every adult in the district, but move the needle for students' outcomes, both academically, socio-emotionally, and behaviorally. So that is what I'm envisioning when we think about, what does it mean when the Mont public schools superintendent and board and team are embarking upon this journey to truly reimagine education? Is that helpful?
It is. I think maybe I'm gonna, and I'm, I'm out of line of who, what, where, how, just.
Save your question for another day then.
Yeah, thank you. Do you remember the conversation that we had with regards to, there was a math course that was being offered that was?
Algebra Two.
No, that was really meant to be more.
Math for the Industries?
Thank you. And I think the problem that was identified was the rigor, right? So the relevance was there, but maybe the rigor and grade level expectations was not? Maybe the question that I'm trying to ask is, is that an effective model of educational pedagogy? Like, so would that be a good class if it actually had the rigor? Are we, are we committed, we're teaching, yes, we're changing practices, but we're still teaching in a classroom setting, in a more traditional classroom setting? And is there a pathway to think about teaching math a different way with the rigor and high expectations?
Yeah, thank you. That's an excellent question. And so my offering with brevity is simply this. There is tremendous value for teachers and students to have from, I think it's the Math for the Industries. The course is designed at a four to eight-grade level, and we're offering the course to students in high school who are sophomores and juniors. There's tremendous value, but not in isolation or as an independent course. I think we have to marry that with a rigorous course such as Algebra One or Algebra Two.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's my response. Hopefully that's helpful.
Dr. Roberts, under what we're going to do, our next steps, the fifth bullet down regarding SRG practices, and I apologize, this is a technical question, it's not very strategic in nature, but can you help me understand? I was under the impression that, one, you've, this is the first time that I've seen SRG practices come into question in one of our monitoring reports. And I was under the impression that students are receiving multiple opportunities to demonstrate mastery. So can you just help me understand what you mean when you say being updated and clarified in that bullet point for next steps?
Thank you. We really appreciate that. In the spirit of continuous learning, and that's what we're anchoring our work in, we have received feedback from multiple sources that our current grading practices are not necessarily meeting the mark, they're not meeting the needs of students, and they're not meeting the needs of teachers. And so we are committed to reviewing and refining our grading practices. So that's why we wanted to make sure we highlight and share that. So at a future date, we are happy to come back to the board and community with what the refinement has manifested itself in.
So are you putting all of SRG on the table, or you're coming back with a refined recommendation around the existing policy of SRG?
It's on the table. I cannot speak right now to, to what extent we are going to refine it, particularly in preparation for the next school year. I'll have to rely on my team to provide me with an update, and I'll come back to the board, happy to come back to the board.
Thank you.
With a factual answer.
I have just one, one more question. Under what we're going to do next, bullet four, with what frequency will principals review key data points to recalibrate?
Daily, daily. One hundred percent of decisions that our school leaders make and our district leaders make will be anchored in credible, reliable, and up-to-date data. I have some leaders who are sitting in, in the room today who, with excitement, all who with excitement always, it seems like weekly they're always, I'm not gonna look at them, always sending me data about updates of what is happening in their schools. So our leaders are truly, truly, it's, it's one of the things that inspires me every day as a superintendent because I am leading a cadre of school leaders who are committed to anchoring their decisions and their practices, incredible and reliable data. Look, I, I am dissatisfied. I, like many other teachers and leaders in this district, lose sleep when we look at the line graph that indicates that we're not meeting proficiency. But it's not daunting. And it's our spiritual continued to be inspired. We recognize that when we come to the board meetings and these monitoring meetings and we see data points such as the one that Board Member Mariano pointed out, where there are four bullets that shows that our proficiency numbers are declining for our students, it means that we are failing. But I don't necessarily want us to stick or wallow in this place where we're not yet meeting the mark. I want us to consider that we are now in year three, in some instances in year two of implementing, um, some frameworks in curriculum. And we know that we are also experiencing some implementation dip. Not an excuse, but it's the brutal facts and it's our reality. The, the celebrations that we are seeing here in terms of black males, certainly black males with IEP having increases in their academic outcomes, those are encouraging data points. But I don't ever want the board or community to get the impression that I'm sitting in a place of satisfaction or complacency because we're not even closely achieving what we are capable of achieving.
Thank you.
I have a final question, um, trying to align with the who, what, where, when, how stuff, so how, uh,
Thank you.
the question.
Thank you.
It is really around how we might leverage community partners more strategically to help us with this work versus it being so heavily reliant on district staff and district leadership.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Memory Maze. We absolutely have to leverage community partners who have the expertise and the skills, um, to support us with this work. We just don't have enough time in any given school day to truly address all of the deficits and meet the needs of our students, given the goals we've set for ourselves. And so, um, I want this to also serve as a public service announcement for community partners to come knocking on our doors. And as long as they have demonstrated that they have not only the skills and the competencies, but the credibility, we have the resources to partner with them. In addition to this public service announcement, I know that our communications team will continue to work with our teaching and learning staff to have a place on our website where a potential community partner can learn about what we're offering and what our needs are within two or three clicks, right? So we have work to do there as well. So we are committed to making sure we leverage the relationships and partnerships with community partners.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dr. Roberts, um, thank you for highlighting the good work that's happening in some of our buildings, particularly at Meredith and Roosevelt. And thank you to the team members who presented. What, what are we going to do particularly? Or what can we model from these two buildings, particularly for our black males, district-wide or system-wide, um, in our next steps to see an increased level of achievement for our sixth through eighth grade black males?
Yeah. So our, our approach and theory of action is simply grounded in the fact that we need to, create professional learning communities, not only within the school environment, but across the district. So there are two things that I want to share that will happen, uh, next year and some of that started this year with our Glean walks. And that is, uh, we are going to have a, and create opportunities where, uh, school leaders across grade levels who share the same grade level band will be able to visit each other's schools and share those practices. At principal meetings, right, instead of having principal meetings where the agenda is, is certainly grounded in operational items, we're gonna focus on what are, where are the opportunities for us to talk about teaching and learning? And then finally, we are looking to create opportunities that will strengthen our commitment around vertical teaming and vertical alignment. So we, uh, want to make sure that we create opportunities where teachers who are teaching grades nine through 12 can actually go and observe and see what is happening in the, with their middle school colleagues so that they know where students are. And vice versa, we can have middle school students, teachers who, and leaders who are visiting high school classes and high schools so that they can see what students are, should know and be able to do when they get to the high school. So, um, strengthen our commitment around vertical teaming and alignment, making sure that we are being thoughtful about our scope and sequence of professional development. And truly looking at creating opportunities for, uh, professional learning communities that goes beyond just what is happening in terms of PLC practice in buildings, but it's across the district. And that's not an exhaustive list. My teaching and learning leadership will be able to go much deeper.
And that grade level banding and PLC work will begin next school year?
Yeah, some of that work started, actually, I believe, um, even prior to my getting here, but we are just gonna double down on it right now. There are practices that are in place. We just focus on refining them so that we can get to this level of, um, what I would like to call intense sophistication, so we can truly change the game and outcomes of students.
Team, any other questions? If not.
What can the board do to help?
Uh, one, I, I, I have said before and I certainly want to reiterate that, um, these opportunities, at these moments where the board pushes us and challenges not only me, but the entire leadership team, we value that. Secondly, um, just, I really value and appreciate, uh, the board's proclivity to, to honor, um, our recommendations and our requests because we are bringing, um, hundreds of years of expertise when we look at the experience of, um, executive cabinet members and school leaders. And so I, I, I believe that the board, as you continue to, uh, say yes to our requests and support, um, some of those big asks. Our partnership with Unbunk Ed, for example, is one of those investments that, um, we're taking a gamble. But, um, the predictive analysis around the data tells us that we're likely to see solid outcomes. And so for the board to continue this to support the work that we're doing and the vision that we have to improve teaching and learning.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we are done. Back to you to accept this report or not.
Thank you, Ms. Alonso, for standing up and bravely willing to lead this conversation. Uh, we are now gonna move forward on deciding whether we as a board accept the monitoring report. May I have a motion and a second to approve item C1, monitoring report goal three.
Dix, so moved.
Alonso, second.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by Alonso. Is there any discussion? Does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. Ms. Campos?
Campos, yes.
Great. We could also let the record reflect that Ms. Campos joined earlier in the process. Thank you. The, uh, vote is approved seven to zero. Thank you so much. Uh, next on the agenda is the public forum and I'm going to turn it to Board Member Dix to lead this part of the agenda.
We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda. We also allow any person the opportunity to speak to the board for up to five minutes following the presentation of an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dmschools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually and we ask that they state their name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their address. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to programs, services, and operations of DMPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order by the chair and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public forum speakers as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
We do. Uh, first up, I'll call RJ Miller.
All right. My name is RJ Miller and I'm in, uh, Drake District. Good afternoon. Uh, one of the things I want to touch on is the state of the black students. The 2023 data, according to your school district, tells me only 27% of black students are proficient in math and only 32% of, are proficient in English, language arts, and 40% of black females and 30% of black males are proficient in their fourth grade Eli. And a staggering 52% of black students are chronically absent. I think that's absolutely unacceptable. And I was listening to you guys' monitoring session. You spoke on the fact that your leadership team is doing all this other different type of stuff. I beg to differ. I think your leadership team is part of the problem. These have been the same people that have been in their positions and have been bringing the district down underground. And you said you were gonna clean up house. I haven't seen you do anything. Matter of fact, I'm gonna quote you. When you, when the first day I met you, I met you in here and I was sitting in the audience, we were going through a school board meeting. This is what you said. You said that you are not gonna come and push the status quo. You are gonna come and be a disruptor and you said that you was gonna be revolutionary. I ain't seen one revolutionary thing that you have done. You sat and told me that you were gonna have, uh, felons be able to come into the school as long as they're not able, as long as they're not sex offenders, as long as they're not child abusers. You also made a statement that, that said you were going to raise, um, substitutes pay and I haven't seen you do that. Also, when I was at the youth town hall, a couple of young ladies told me when they were at Lincoln, you made a mention you were gonna come up there and you did not do that. There have been several students who have been telling me that you've been saying you're gonna do stuff and you haven't been keeping your word. You haven't kept your word with me either. And I don't care about you taking your glasses off, giving me that little meme mug or none of that type of stuff, period. You see how you're looking at me? Anyways, I'm gonna go back to what I was saying. So the, the other, the other, the other aspects of what I was gonna say, brother, is you're, you're, you're making, you're speaking we. Who is we? When you're sitting there saying your, your leadership team is, uh, doing things with community partners, I beg to differ because I'm not a community, actually, I'm a former community partner. I'm not the person that's not in the community. I'm heavily involved in the community. All areas of my ward, all areas of my district. And there have been several black organizations who have stated that your school district does not support them, does not answer emails. I can bear witness to this and if I had, was able to give a presentation, I will put it on the board right now and show you haven't been responsive to emails, you haven't been keeping your word, your district staff haven't been responsive to emails.
30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. So at the end of the day, you need to clean up house and you need to be a man of your word and you need to stop doing things that are, that are unacceptable. And at the end of the day, a black face and a high place means absolutely nothing to my community. 30, I ain't no 30 seconds. Anyways, a black face and a high place means nothing to my community. At the end of the day, if a black, if a black person's in position of power and the majority of black students remain disempowered, there is a problem. I call conspiracy and I beg to differ. There is white supremacy within your student.
Next speaker. Next speaker. I'd like to call Dr. Anita Fleming-Rife.
That's all right. I've been there and done that.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Anita Fleming-Rife. My address is 2403 Southwest Prairie Trail Parkway in Ankeny. First, I'd like to just say, um, I'd like to extend my heartfelt congratulations, uh, to Dr. Roberts. He has made it through the first year and so we're glad that, that you're here with us and thank you, uh, for being here with us. I am the president of Black Child Development Institute of Iowa. We are an organization that exists to improve the quality of life for African-American children, black children, and their families through education, advocacy, and empowerment. Many of you on the board know that I am a proud East High alum. I am deeply rooted in Iowa. It is a place that I am proud to call home. The memories of my childhood spent with friends on the east side of Des Moines are some of the fondest that I hold. Years ago, I read Bill Bryson's The Life and the Tales of the Thunderbolt Kid. While he grew up on the west side, our experiences were much the same. Our families and our village instilled in us the value of exceptional education that we received in our schools. This was a long time ago, back when we were really number one in the country. This is why I stand before you today. I am here to advocate for the preservation of Des Moines Public Schools for all of our children. In 2015, when I moved back to Iowa, I met with some school board members and I shared with them a study that I had conducted in 2004, the 50th anniversary of Brown v. Board of Education. I shared that charter schools and voucher programs posed a threat to public schools in Iowa. I was told that could not happen in Iowa and it would not happen in Iowa. That same year, 2015, the Arkansas State Board of Education classified six of Little Rock's 48 schools academically distressed because fewer than half of the students scored at proficient levels on the state's assessment test. The state took over the school district. They dismantled the school board. They brought in corporations to run the district and now there are 28 failing schools. The same story in New Orleans. Read Reynard Sanders' book, The Coup d'Etat of New Orleans Public Schools. The same thing has happened this year in Houston. So in case you think it's a southern thing, let me say it is not. The first state takeover of public schools was 30 years ago in Jersey City, New Jersey. When I was at Penn State as faculty up there in Happy Valley, the state took over Philadelphia.
30 seconds remaining.
In fact, more than 100 school districts have been taken over by states. States take over because either low academic performance and/or fiscal challenges. The takeovers have occurred in districts that serve low-income children and students of color. And I share this with you because we have had for many years, as many priority schools in, uh, as Little Rock has had in theirs. And Iowa is among the 24 states with the power to take over a school district. The Brookings Institute says these takeovers do not result in improved academic outcomes. In, uh, an article that I read last year, The Washington Post cited three studies that show that takeovers have not resulted in improved academic outcomes. So I am asking you, our public servants, safeguard our public schools. Make sure that our children, as we move forward, have the same kind of academic outcomes that I had, uh, back in the 50s, graduating in 1964. I am just about done. One more paragraph, okay? So we, um, I think we must be unwavering in our pursuit of academic excellence for all. It's our collective responsibility as a community to ensure that every single child receives a superior education. So I want us to use our collective power to make sure DP, DMPS remains under local control. And so we're gonna have to, um, move the academic needle without excuses.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming-Rife. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for speakers. Those are all the speakers we have. Ma'am? If you can, if you can, please go ahead and fill out the.
If you, there's a form right over there, Skylar. Mr. Maybe Maze, will you just, there we go. And you just need to fill it out and I believe put your name and address on it. Welcome.
Welcome and thank you. I'm sorry, it's been a few years since I've been here. My name is Gaylene Narcisse. I live at 813 25th Street in Des Moines, Iowa. Uh, my brother Jonathan, at one time, was on the school board. And my mother Gaynell and Fred Narcisse were active members of the community. And, um, active members of the community. And it's been a while since I've been here, and I'll probably start coming regularly now, because there's some things that I want to share. I am a member of the BCDI Iowa organization. I've been volunteering at King Elementary with the Reading Mentor Program. And as I sat here and listened to the conversation today, I just want to share a couple of comments. People in the community may not come often to the Des Moines School Board meetings. So, myself, my background's in computer science. We use acronyms a lot. But just because you say PLC in your language may mean something else in my language. So, I would appreciate if you could say, like, you know, Public Legacy Community, PLC, instead of just saying PLC. And Galen, I would appreciate understanding what that means. And every time you have a meeting about those things with the acronym, you may have said it a thousand times. Please say it again for the new people who come to the school board meeting, who realize the public school system is important to the fabric of our society, that we maintain it. And the elementary school system is the foundation for our public school system, pre-K, elementary, middle school, and high school. And so, as we move forward, the programs that you've talked about for the high school level, if the kids don't have a solid foundation in elementary school for math, reading, language, et cetera, they will not succeed in high school. I've been working with the 3rd grade and the rising 4th graders over at King, and I'm working with them this summer as part of BCDI. And I am surprised to find out that kids going into the 4th grade cannot read simple, three-letter words. How are those 4th graders going to succeed in 4th grade? 4th grade, not 2nd grade, 4th grade. And that's a concern to me. So, that's why I would be here every meeting, God willing, until I can see that those numbers, statistics that you're sharing--
Thirty seconds remaining.
--are and will be improving. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for supporting the Des Moines Public School System.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who do I need to give this to?
You can return that to me. Those are all the speakers.
Thank you so much. We will now move to consent items. Mr. Dix, I believe you have the consent agenda.
Would you like me to read the reminder as well for the discussion?
Thank you. As a reminder to the board in public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with a speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table with speakers' comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers? No, there are no speakers. At that, Mr. Dix, I believe you have the consent motion.
I do. I move that the board approve the consent items in accordance with the recommended actions for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $13,176.45.
We have a motion by Dix and a second by-- oh, may I have a second, please?
Second, Martirano.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dix and a second by Martirano. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions?
Jackie, I would like to amend the motion to pull Item 5, the Parent Square app for board discussion.
Is there a second?
Knox, second.
We have a motion by Campos and a second by Knox to pull Item 5 from the consent agenda item and move it to Other so that it can be discussed. Board members, please cast your vote for this amendment.
Campos, yes.
The vote passes 6 to 1, and the item is moved to Other. Board members, is there any additional discussion on the consent agenda? If not, board members, please cast your vote for the consent agenda as amended. The vote-- Ms. Campos?
Campos, yes.
The vote passes 7 to 0. Now, we are moving to Other. The first item on Other is Item 5. We have the original motion, which is to approve the purchase of Parent Square, which is Item Number 5. I will open this item up for discussion.
Jackie, the reason why I want to reiterate the last conversation that we had on this new app that's going in for our families, I still have a little bit more concern of what difference from this app to the previous one that we have been using. I feel like the one that we have currently, a lot of us parents, including myself, do use it for the full effect. And then, just doing a little bit more research on it, I'm not quite sure that we've given it a whole lot of importance when it comes to the useful of the app. I know a couple of schools have never utilized it. So, I'm trying to figure out or see, you know, have we really went through everything of what we could do to utilize it at our full potential? And then, going to where Dr. Roberts stated that the new app was more helpful for the non-English-speaking families. And then, when I went on to the current app, which is the Connect, it did give me like 58 languages that we could utilize. So, I mean, that's kind of where my thought is still about the-- I mean, are we utilizing it for their full potential?
Thanks, Ms. Campos. Are there other comments? If not, I'll share mine, but--
Did you-- I wonder why you're looking at me? I guess I would just share that I share Anna's concerns about this in that it feels from a user experience perspective that this is a quick change. And I understand that that is not the case, having run through the materials. But from the practical user experience, that is the case, and that perception is going to be reality. And I guess my only other comment would be that I would appreciate, as we move forward, to see decisions like this as part of a wider communication strategy. This is where we see our families first, and it's incredibly important that they see us and have an experience with us that is positive, that's easy, that's intuitive, and that isn't frustrating. And I fear that this is going to be a frustration this year that will pile on to other frustrations. And so, I guess I would just make that my comment, that I have that concern from the user experience standpoint. The materials that were provided for us, the app looks great. But I do believe that there was maybe a wider net to be cast here from a strategic standpoint to make this kind of investment, to capture all of the uses that we need for a communication tool like this.
If it's okay, thank you, Mr. Dix. And I've shared my thoughts already with the board members. I do want to acknowledge and especially call out Ms. Martirano's decision to vote no, because I do want to acknowledge that this is a management decision. And I want to also acknowledge that I think my hope is that by pulling-- this is about an app, but it's actually about something more than an app. And these are solely my views that I want to share. Typically, when the board looks at the consent agenda, we should look and ask questions, but assume that these are based on solid recommendations from the staff. And yet, I always go over them because I think that's our expectation, just like it is, I'm sure, of my board colleagues. When I looked at this, I quickly put on three hats. One of them was that of a parent. One of them was that as a school board member. And one of them was trying to understand how this fits into a decision that supports a high-performing organization, which is what DNPS wants to do. And then, also, is this a good financial investment? So, as I went on my learning journey, what I was really struggling with was the positive is enhancing language translation, which is something that we value highly because we want to engage more families. However, I felt like if there would have been more community engagement, I went back through the board listening sessions even that we had in the community, and we often heard about multiple technology apps. And so, my struggle is that we continuously have multiple options. So, we have Snap Connects, we have Infycampus. And for those of you that have kids that have activities or athletics, I have four apps on my phone right now. And they don't translate. They have no language accessibility for parents. And so, I think part of my struggle is that we have to, as a board, expect that recommendations that are coming are holistic and thoughtful, and every avenue has been explored. And Dr. Roberts, this might have started well before you got here. And I understand that there's a contract ticking that needs to be signed. But at some point, I feel like this has happened before, where something comes to us and we have to sign a contract because the time is ticking. So, I want to apologize to staff. I think there's some great staff that have been working on this. If the board was not clear in setting high expectations on the need to have something that is holistic and thoughtful and strategic, and that fits in a broader communications plan, I am sorry. We brought Dr. Roberts in to bring change and to set the bar high and to model high expectations. And in my opinion, this is me, I am choosing to do this, just like Mr. Dix and Ms. Campos has chose to. We have to show that we are modeling high expectations. And this does not show very customer-centric thinking. And I am asking that we really consider how this, which may be a small thing, an app, actually is representative of the way we're showing how we show up to our community. And so, with that, I apologize that we are not spending time on student outcomes, as opposed to talking about a management issue, Dr. Roberts. But I did feel very strongly about bringing this up. Comments from other board members, or if not, Dr. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. I have to tell you that I certainly appreciate the board's reaction and the deliberation that you are having right now and the feedback that you've given to us. The feedback certainly is going to inspire myself and team to make sure that we are continuously looking at our practices, particularly around making complex, high-impact decisions. And I'm gonna take this feedback with the team, and certainly, when we have to make decisions in the future, we have a couple of decision-making protocols that we tend to follow that really looks at three big buckets of work. And that is one, what is the analytics or the data that suggests that this change is necessary at this time? The second is around equity. Is the decision that is being made grounded in an equitable approach? How will it impact the most marginalized amongst us? And then, the third is around communication. And certainly, as I think about the feedback that you've just given to us, each of these three areas, we have room to grow, clearly, particularly with regards to this time-sensitive shift and pivot that we're making. You know, oftentimes, there is this struggle between intentions versus impact. And our intention was to make sure that we were pivoting away from an existing practice to adopting a new one that will improve and enhance the experience of all of our parents. The impact that, based on what I'm hearing from board members, is that it is likely to have not so much of a positive experience on users. So, what we are gonna commit to do is make sure that we are opening up spaces and opportunities to receive that feedback, but also to try to ultimately get to this place where, Madam Chair, you only have one app on your phone, right? That's the ultimate goal.
Or two.
Or two. Right? We certainly don't want to have multiple unless it's absolutely necessary. And so, I also thank the board for your consideration and recognizing that this is time-sensitive. Our existing partnership expires at the end of August, and so, we certainly do not want to go into the school year where parents do not have a way of communicating with us. But I personally will take full responsibility for how this rollout is landing on you all and probably some of our parents out there. And we are committed to getting better.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, for receiving the comments as such. Board members, are there any other comments at this point? I think based on that, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to amend the current motion, which is to purchase on Item 5, and table this item and send it back to Dr. Roberts for further discussion with his staff. And you will come back likely next week because there potentially will be a convening, a virtual convening, with an updated recommendation.
I receive that, Madam Chair, and we thank you for your consideration.
Okay. So, again, board members, Ms. Martirano?
I was just gonna say, point of order. There's not a motion on the floor right now, so you'll need to make a motion to table.
Yes. So, I think the current motion actually is to purchase.
There's not a motion on the floor.
It was not made.
So, then, the motion on Item 5 is to table Item 5 until a future school board meeting.
Can we have a second?
Okay. I guess technically I made the motion, but Nora--
Second from Campos.
Thank you. Second from Campos. And board members, please cast your votes.
Campos, yes.
The vote is 6 to 1 for a table. Next, we have F1, Fiscal Year FY25 Budget and Goals Update. And Dr. Roberts, if you want to introduce the topic.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. This update around FY25 budget goals and costing is one that will be anchored in brevity this evening. The team has about seven minutes, no more than 10, to present. So, we actually want to provide the board with some of the thoughts we've inserted into how we intend to provide and allocate and reallocate resources in order for us to achieve Goals 1, 2, and guardrails 1 through 5, which will come much later on. Goal 3, as the board is fully aware, is in a zero base year. So, we are gonna focus on Goals 1 and 2 this evening.
And board members, just to remind you that part of the reason this is really important is because with the framework of Student Outcomes Focus Governance, part of the way we evaluate our superintendent is through goals and guardrails. And the expectation is that the superintendent actually has the resources. He needs to be successful, which is why we're going through the exercise to understand, based on the new goals and then the new guardrails, if appropriate dollars and resources are being allocated to support the accomplishment of the goal. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This should hopefully not actually take more than seven minutes. So, the agenda is basically, I want to cover at a very high level the FY24 board goals and the FY25 goals, and what is the costing for them. I am not going to repeat FY24 board goals. They are sunsetting. And this is just a recap of what the costs that we had budgeted and what is the year-to-date spend and estimated till the end of the year. Now, let's come to FY25 board goals. So, Goal 1 is very similar to what we had in the previous board goals. But Goal 2 and Goal 3 have definitely changed. And Goal 2 is related to increasing proficiency in middle-level literacy for black and Latinx students. And 3 is the achievement for future-ready indicators. So, let's come to the costing of the board goals. Something I would try to highlight for all the three board goals that we have over here is there is no additional cost which is coming as part of this exercise. The costs are either being repurposed, or the additional increase is coming from the additional dollars that we are getting from AEA. So, if the board remembers, there was a transition that from FY25, the media and education services dollars, which used to come to AEA, 60% of that would be coming to the school district in FY25, and then it will become 100% in FY26. So, some of those dollars have been used for some spending. I think one of the board members has raised the question, does that impact the budget that was approved? Yes, it does, because when the board had approved the budget, we did not have full transparency about the AEA dollars. The good thing is, we have an opportunity till April, May of FY25 for any amendment to the FY25 budget that-- for any amendment to the FY25 budget that has been approved by the board. So there is, from my side at least, there is not a hurry to approve the amendment at this point in time because amendments between now and April, May of 2025 will happen.
The only question I just want to ask for board clarification is, it was clear that the board felt at an earlier conversation that they wanted to be updated if there were material changes to expectations that were approved in the budget. And so what is the process if material changes are being made in the negative that would impact achievement of goals and guardrails that we would be notified? Did I say that?
So if I'm understanding, what you're saying is, when you're saying the negative is that if the board has approved an X amount of dollars, we are now spending more than X. Is that how I should interpret?
Or less than X.
Or less than X. So we are not spending more or less. We add the same thing, the only, sorry, let me rephrase myself. We are not spending less. The increase that we are spending is the additional AEA dollars that we are receiving from the change in new regulations. So there will be an increase in revenue coming through. That's sixty percent for education services and media services and an equivalent increase in expenses. So the net impact of that should be zero.
The net impact is zero, but we are increasing the allocation.
That is accurate.
And that total increase of allocation, is this nine-point-five-eight? Is that correct? No, okay.
It's not.
It's, you're, you're saying it is a percentage, just sixty percent of the media services that AEA provides, but what's the total amount of that?
Sure. So the media services was two-point-three million dollars, which is hundred percent. And education services was two-point-one million dollars, which is hundred percent. We are getting one-point-four million dollars, which is sixty percent for media and one-point-three for education. So the actual increase for the budget is two-point-seven million dollars. That is the sixty percent and that is dialed in the board goals.
And is that two points, increase in two-point-seven million? Is that outlined in these slides?
So if we, if we...
Excuse me.
Kim, if we look into the, the funding source comments that we have, we have tried to highlight where the funding is coming from, whether it is general fund, SPED, City of Des Moines, EQPD, wherever the funding is coming from, we have tried to highlight the funding source. And let me also clarify that out of the two-point-seven, especially the portion which is coming from media services, the full amount is not being spent over here. Education services, one-point-three million dollars, hundred percent is going into the goals. So one-point-three million dollars, hundred percent. Media services, not hundred percent.
Pardon my lack of knowledge and depth of the AEA changes, but is this sustainable? Or are we going to be finding, needing to find this money next year?
You raise a very interesting question, Patrick, because the reason why I say that is this year in FY25, it is sixty percent. FY26, it is going to become hundred percent. If we are having the same discussion three to five years from now, it's very difficult to say politically what is on the agenda, whether that will continue or not continue. And that's why I say it's an interesting question. And that is something which we have discussed internally as well as with other peers of mine.
So did I understand you correctly? We'll have more next fiscal year, not less?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, at least for next.
For those two?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I think the only clarifying question I'm trying to get at is we have a new goal to a broader population than black males because we've called out Black and Latino males. And yet it looks like, and maybe I'm just reading this wrong, our investment is actually going down?
So the goal two, which was old, and the goal two, which is new, are not the same?
Right. But, yeah, I understand that. But a huge part of that has a staffing component, has a professional development component. I'm not articulating it maybe in the way that I'd like. Are we adequately spending to support goal two?
We are. And so there are two thoughts that I want to share, Madam Chair. And the first is the point that you made with regards to the likelihood that we will need to spend on professional development. The funds may come from, you know, a, a different line item. And then the second is we want to make sure that we, as a leadership team, take full advantage of the longer runway we have for which, where, in which we can make budget amendments up until April of 2025. Because once we get into the school year and we're actually remitting payment, looking at what the needs are, the ever-changing needs, we want to be able to come back to the board with some additional ask that will be grounded in much more solid data.
So unless someone has any specific questions on the goals, that is what I wanted to cover.
I guess I just feel the need to call out, though, again, with goal three, we're in year zero, phase zero, or year zero. And so in FY25, we are not going to spend three-point-six-three million dollars.
Not additional dollars. These are repurposed dollars. So for goal three, the money was already being spent by the district. Now there's a more focused approach to accomplish the same goal and that is why we are trying to highlight that these are the dollars that will be spent on that particular goal. And I let either Robert or Dr. Roberts to comment on that.
Before you do that, though, I need layman's terms. Like, I need the 101 explanation because I feel like the board put some support behind, didn't we approve a set of dollars for our goals? I mean, we voted on something. And so I appreciate the amendment process and we have until April, but I just want to make sure we're not saying that in FY25, for goal three, we are spending three-point-six-three million dollars because we shouldn't or we're not. Because we're not capable of spending that much money on that goal because we're building it as we speak.
That is accurate, Madam Chair. We do not intend to spend that, the fund that is listed there. But I think recapping what Shashank shared, that's repurposed funding that will be there. If it's the board's desire, two things. One, based on how we approach this zero base year for goal three, if there's a need, for example, for us to hire a consultant or for us to look at additional support for our goal three team, then we will make those decisions and then keep the board updated. If, however, the board believes that there is some risk in terms of our fiduciary responsibility by keeping that amount there, then, you know, I'm happy to hear the board's thoughts about what we should do with that three-point...
Three-point-six-two.
Three-point-six-two million dollars, yeah.
I think it's rare that we actually have some money. And so I think the question is, how do we know that we are going to maybe think about saving three million dollars? Or, like, I, I just want to make sure that there is a conversation because remember, we pulled money from that extra fund, which some struggled with. And so if we are not going to spend that money, I guess I'm saying, please, let's consider not just spending it, but putting it back in our reserve fund for next year.
That's fair.
That's fair, received, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, board members?
Yes, I have a question. So I guess I was not reading this graphic correctly then. So with the investment in goal three, if we're not spending the three-point-six-two million, are we spending the four-point-zero-seven and the one-point-four-seven for goals one and two?
Possibly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so those two are accurate.
Yes.
That's great. Dr. Mary, very nice, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And are we, we had talked about like a quarter, are we doing budget to actuals on a quarterly basis? Or how will we, as you start getting in the groove? I think just, we just need to understand that resources that are being allocated are supporting the goals and guardrails so on a regular basis.
So when I had responded back to your email, I was talking about general fund as a whole. I was not specifically talking about every, all the three goals being updated financially on a quarterly basis. So general fund as a whole, absolutely. We will get into the cadence of providing quarterly updates to the board. We will.
And I think, again, just going back to the techno, like I think about the technology example we had last year where there was a little bit of a lack of communication when there are material changes that significantly impact goals, guardrails, or big decisions that were made that impact the trajectory of the district that the board is aware.
So, so what we can do is, along with the quarterly financials that I would share with the board, I can also share exactly what you had mentioned in your email, which was any items that were, that had been budgeted and not spent or items not budgeted, but we are spending.
Of material significance.
Of material significance.
And you can define what that is.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just want to say thank you as well. I feel like this is the start of next year's budget process. I, for one, am, would love a really long runway into that process so that we are not feeling at all stressed by the time we get to the spring.
Absolutely.
Thank you. With that, we are going to move quickly to committee updates, brief committee updates. Is there anything that my board colleagues would like to share?
Our committee retreat will be meeting Thursday. Have a, just get a better idea of order of things for our upcoming two days.
And just confirm, all board members have it on their calendars and they will be here in person?
Yeah.
And Dr. Roberts?
And on time.
Yes.
And on time. And Dr. Roberts, you've communicated with your staff as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you.
Update from the CLAC committee. We are meeting the 25th, so the next iteration of this update, I will have a more informed update.
Thanks, Ms. Martirano.
And just really quickly, an update from the naming rights committee. We're working on a draft that we can get some feedback from the, from the board on. Had a great discussion about that last week and are planning on meeting again before the end of July.
And on that, we are actually going to punt on items of privilege and for further explanation later. But we need to conclude this meeting. We are going to ask everybody to exit immediately. We are going to have a work session. So we just need a moment or two to regroup and figure out where we're going to do that. Is that significant information?
Yeah, thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening.
So this meeting is adjourned at 7:33 PM.